Good. Call meeting order, roll call.
Mayor Westover.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Reese.
Yes.
No one for public forum? Consent agenda, any additions? Motion to approve.
I'm on it.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Over.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yep.
Reese.
Yes.
We have one building permit to.
Yep, Tricia Nielsen, and that's red super.
Motion to approve that building permit. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Reese.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yep.
Tom.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
The crowd wants to close the street on June 20th, July 4th.
Yeah, a couple of things here. So June, June 20th would be a, a baggs event, a baggs tournament out there on, on Fourth Street. So what they do is they close the street at the intersection of Main, and it, it's only closed until the driveway of, of the ATM. So it's only about two-thirds of that block that's closed. They've done several times last year, and would like to have another baggs tournament on the 20th of June, but then they'll be more scheduled during the summer. They just don't have the dates. And then the other thing would be on July 4th, so same concept there, things to do more of on Fourth Street.
Motion to authorize that street closure?
Yeah, okay.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Okay, we want to close the street for the concerts.
Yeah, just a little update on that, Jen. Can you give a little update, John, about what, what the plans are for?
We're going to, we're going to use, put the food stand across the road if we have power, but we're going to find that out. And then we're going to close from, you know, two piers by John Quinn's over to the Stone House during the concert, and we'll close it down toward the lake. Just for the concert, we just want to keep, so people can have their six-foot distance.
Yeah.
That's our plan, we'll move the food stand and spread everybody out.
So the, yeah, the plan is still that, so on July 4th, they'd have the, have the concert, and basically the concert and the food stand and everything would go off very much as normal, enlarging the area to try to do what they can to encourage the social distance. So seating area is much larger, including then this portion of Third Street which will be closed. With the idea that they could, could get golf carts and UTVs and stuff in there, people could actually watch the concert then from their, from their golf carts. Then the, the food stands across the street too, bathrooms, some of the bathrooms are across the street, and bathrooms are, or perhaps are at two different locations, again, trying to do what you can not to have everybody congregating in one spot. That is the request. They know that, that they'll be closing the street for July 4th. I'm going to ask that the council would approve this for the three remaining concerts, July 4th, August 8th, and September 6th.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, order's five ten, this is the second reading, I'm going to try to cut down the parking lot seventy-two hours.
Right, yes.
Let it out for the community.
I've heard no comments on this one.
I'll make the most of it.
Second?
On the second?
Roll call.
Over.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, resolution 2036. Resolution is set for the advance, hopefully look at this four-way made.
Dave, are you there? Dave, are you there now?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, very good. So, um, we're up to the, the portion about the 408 Main Street Development Agreement. I want to go through that Development Agreement here, and then we'd talk process about the resolution in the public hearing. That's the council to look at page five is where that Development Agreement starts. And we're actually need to start looking at a few things on page six. So, um, this is the proposed Development Agreement that incorporates what Dr. Boe had asked for, okay? So it incorporates what he'd asked for, and then also incorporates roughly the timeline of, of what he would do for, to proceed with, with the project. But, um, Dave, Janet has reviewed and updated the agreement, everything's been updated on the legal side of things, but you guys are the first ones to see this, and we have not presented it to Dr. Boe. Okay, so at the top of page six, um, there's a few things there, so there'd be this resolution that does three things. Transfers ownership of 408 Main to, to the LLC, it's called Doug's. Um, and that's, that's Dr. Boe's LLC. So it does three things, transfers ownership of 408 Main, transfers the south five feet of the Market Square lot, and grants a right of first refusal to purchase the remainder of the Market Square lot. Those are, are the requests of, of Dr. Boe. Throw that out for discussion.
Somebody was telling me that when they put the Farmer's Market in there, that that was a grant, and they cannot take that away from.
They used some, yeah, they used some grant funding for that, but I, I don't agree a lot with them. Five feet, if they're, if they're, well, for significant amount of years.
Well, then, in that deal, where you can put Farmer's Market, you can take that, you can't get.
Guess that's the question, you know, what's the, what's the impact if you would sell five feet of that lot?
Well, you probably handle more people than that, than, than us does, because the more people come to Farmer's Market, then, to the dentist, like this place model.
I don't know if it would generate the revenue.
I ain't talking about the revenue, I'm talking about if they bring people to Main Street.
I understand that, but I think we can relocate it somewhere, and I don't think we can turn down a taxpaying business.
I don't think we need to give them five feet. And then everybody's happy. Are we paying for the five feet?
We would be giving, we would be dealing it to, it would be given.
So, you know, I think not.
Just all part of the property swap.
We would be taking the other property.
I muted you for a second there, Dave, if you were saying anything.
We had, you get some feedback on your line, so you may want to make sure you unmute yourself when you're talking. Okay, so, did, did you have a comment, Dave? Dave, Janet? Hello, I hear you now.
Okay, uh, what was the question? I didn't catch it.
Well, it's, right now, the, the council's really discussing that five feet of the Farmer's Market lot, and whether they'd be interested in, in including that with the property swap.
Terry, Terry thinks there was grant money used, and that you can't do that. I don't even know, because that was done before I.
Well, that's just something somebody brought up to me, that that was grant funding, and they couldn't, couldn't take that back.
Well, as in the council, when we did that Farmer's Market to start with, and at that time, the council said if somebody offers us a dollar to put up a high-dollar building, we'd look to it. That council thought, yes.
That was a different concept.
Different concept, and that was their plan then, though. If they, if they could get a taxpaying business to pay taxes, they'd really have that.
So Farmer's Market takes up all the space all the way back to the alley?
Well, it, it would take that more if it was that cement.
Okay, so.
But you can only have one row, you'd only be able to have one row of it. There's ten vendors, so you wouldn't be able to use both sides.
So if we go all the way through the alley, with ten vendors, could you?
Well, you cement it out, yeah.
What if we do that?
I don't see a problem.
I, I don't know.
Well, it does involve.
We'd have to buy.
Well, I understand that, but.
Basically, cementing the back half of it anyway.
But Terry, and I know I involve you personally, but, yeah, I, I just think that, for me, I have to look at it like a taxpayer, and how I would view that use. I've got nothing against the Farmer's Market, or you, or anything, and I, and I certainly want the Farmer's Market, I just think it's more mobile, and this is a chance to have a taxpaying business there. I, I've got nothing against the Farmer's Market, but more than.
I understand you do, it's just that, um, if we keep the five feet there, it's not a problem for anybody. Why do we want to give him that when he was satisfied to take that building and build? And now give him another five feet, why?
Does he need the five feet for the structure?
That he would, he would build a, a bigger building that way, lots of little ramps.
But how far away does he stand from the Southwood?
Just, boy, only a few feet there, that, just enough to keep them separate.
Why would he keep them separate? Every building on the north side is connected.
They, boy, they really do, I think, intend to keep them separate, and Brotherton's being the neighbor, they like that idea too, as far as having them separate.
The original footprint was separate.
I think it'd be a good compromise to go, like, to go back to the alley.
Well, Brian won't have to get down this, you know. Sign next year.
I think, I think that'd be a good compromise.
But he's also got in there that he may want the other space aside.
Just a right of first refusal, so the city couldn't turn around and sell it to somebody else, you'd have to.
Without offer.
Yeah, if, if we would arrange a sale to a, to a third party at a certain price, Dr. Boe would have the option to match up.
That's what that first refusal is always based to.
How many feet is it on the, the property, is it anything to, you know?
The, the property itself varies a little bit on, on the depth, but it's over 140.
Right.
And, so the property's 37 and a half feet wide.
Well, yeah, well, because that, there's a widening of sidewalk, so they have to do something on that side.
Well, we wouldn't want that.
Scott, can you hear me?
Yep, yep, sure can.
Um, you know, what the council has to consider is that that five foot, there, I don't know what the downtown side yard requirements are, but, uh, that would just allow the development to go up to the edge of the lot, if it's the, the same side yard as it would be in a residential, but I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't know what the side yard requirements are down in the commercial district area, maybe it's zero, I don't know.
It is zero in that area.
Okay.
But as we look at, at commitments on, on the part of the city, again, it's a three-fold deal. They, they exchange the building, five feet on the Farmer's Market, and the right of refusal. So if we ask for commitments from the city, those are the three things.
But the question I have is, um, so it says on page nine, time of the essence, and it talks about, you know, if any waiver of time of performance shall not be being a waiver. I didn't probably word that quite right. So Dave, my question is, is that if we got down to the, to the nitty-gritty, and then Dr. Boe has not finished, or, 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 I don't know, something goes wrong, and he's not needing that timetable, um, what, what rights do we have to the property we've traded for then?
Well, we would have, we would have the restrictive covenant, which would basically allow us to, uh, revoke the quit lane deed, or revoke the deed conveying the property if, if the conditions were not performed pursuant to either the Development Agreement, and then the deed itself, that we would use, it would also have the restrictive covenants in there that provide that if the property is developed pursuant to the Development Plan, that, uh, the property would refer to the city.
Right, but, but what about the 414 Main, or 413 Main? The, the building across the street that we're going to trade for, so would we not be able to do anything with that building until Dr. Boe has completely finished this whole project?
That would be the, that would be the, yes.
Okay.
I, I didn't catch that, Dave, what was the answer?
That, that would, that would be prudent until, until we see they're not a deed to Dr. Boe's LLC was going to go through, but, uh, because obviously, if there's a failure of consideration, it would be on both ends.
So if, if the contract is basically void, then both, both parties give back their property?
Right.
Can we, uh, can we rent, can we rent out 413 while we're using it?
Something. Well, the timeline is, what, 2021? 2021, August, November? Yeah, I mean, it's not far away, I just, I just kind of wanted to know going in what the options are. You know, and I'm sure that, you know, hopefully that would not be an issue, but I just, I mean, I don't think it's a problem for us to take hold of it that long, do you, but I just wanted to know.
I guess I would contend that, that we could still proceed down a path about finding a prospective purchaser.
Right.
Okay, but even if we just got to rent it to them while we're the owner.
Right, okay.
On page seven, a couple of things, you see the phases, and, and these, these are, these are just the items that, that Dr. Boe had identified, okay? So in phase one, about the USDA approvals, the approvals are done, and the environmental clearance is done. So, so that's all been, been attended to. Then you see the, a little bit about, about timeline, it deals in number of months since, uh, since the entering into the Supreme. Um, so then phase three, then is, is when the project's done, and that's, say, in 15 months, which then has a harder date there, August 31st.
So you're saying that Dr. Boe has already kind of, this has been discussed a little bit, so he's kind of semi-aware?
This is what he sent, this is what he sent me as, as an email.
I see, okay.
Okay, so he sent me that as an email, as I'm talking with him.
So he thinks he can make that?
Here recently, he is, I tell you, he's, he's somewhat leery on these things, you know, about COVID-related stuff, and how the startup is affecting his business.
I wonder if that means.
He's not getting.
About whether he would quickly get into this, you know, get.
So you're saying he may not because of COVID?
Right.
So if he's not going to make this timeline, then this deal's off.
It, we will, we, this will be the proposed timeline, Dave. I would expect your son to back when you get.
We're going to, we're going to send it to him, he'll come back with a change.
Well, we're not going to prove yet, you know, and that's, Dave gets in, gets into some things on process too.
But don't you think that's in every business with, with, fast moving, and, like, even go past it? Well, like in Carroll, like we go past, you used to can get in the pipe, and now to a new car. Because people are afraid.
Well, I understand that, but I don't, I don't want to go into an open-ended agreement, you know, it's what I, I don't know.
I don't know, you're right.
I'd, I'd say you said this, hit this to him.
This is your.
This is Paul.
A couple of things still at bottom of page seven, the eligible tax payment, I wrote this as a note on mine, no additional cash incentives, your, our incentive to the project has been to demolish the building.
Right, yes. Plus, right, plus we did the, that's, that's just.
Oh, yes, that's, that's, yeah, yeah. And then I had highlighted the, the remedy section there on, on page eight, and that's what Dave was talking about, the, the contract support, if they fail to perform, perform further time. So if you flip to page 10, then you see this is the part about, about the process, okay? So even though we're swapping properties with, with Dr. Boe, this is still a disposal of city-owned property of 408 Main. So we still got to follow through a process on that, which is pretty much just involves this, this public hearing. So I'm going to ask that the council would, would approve this resolution, and it's going to set a public hearing date then for the next council meeting, which is July 6th, with, with a public hearing on the proposed disposal of, of the property of 408 Main.
Well, how, how does that work out, Scott, if, if the agreement is signed by them?
We would, we would only hold the hearing, you don't need to take action. So we've done that.
So we have it whether it's signed or not?
Okay, we would hold a public hearing either way.
Motion 2036 to set the hearing.
I'll make that move.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Okay, over.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, the library addition, we have the pay estimate on the form, we've got a couple of change orders.
Yeah, on the pay estimate number four, this is actually quite a bit of work done there, the pay estimate's for $97,622, so it's the, all the framing, and a lot of mechanical work, and electrical work being done inside. You see that the, the roof has been completely, completely redone on the existing library also, so a lot of things, a lot of good things are falling into place, um, in that, I'm going to recommend that, that pay estimate for approval. Just a little update on, on the project then, because there's a couple of little hiccups along the way, and we'll talk about those change orders, and the mason showed up to, to do the brickwork outside, and the split-faced accent blocks are, are a substantially different color than the existing building. So they're having to cut those down to where they can get something that's a much closer matchup. So, um, Scott Lyon's working on that, on that for us, and the, the mason was here ready to go, and, and luckily, he, the mason noticed this, this problem, because they're going to the. So, that's kind of one of the, one of the big holdups, uh, for now on the exterior, but they do continue to plug away on the interior, and it's coming along well.
So how many payments have we paid? We've paid a couple.
Total, total project, Terry, would, is, is 312, and we would have paid 144?
So that would be, that's, that's 97.
That, that includes 97, we, we would have paid 144,000, less repaid in fact.
Do you have a motion to approve the pay estimate? Roll call.
Over.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yep.
Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, we have a pay estimate on the CDVG.
It's not split, they'll change orders.
That's what we talked about.
But I just need approval on those, and I just listed them in the memo. Change order two, three, four, five, two is actually credit. Uh, is, is a credit, change order number three is to reduce the size of the south entrance door. We had actually had a ten-by-ten roof there to start with, and that affected, the existing electric service coming into the old building affected that, and they needed to downsize that, so it actually cost us a little bit more money to give me rafters and whatnot that they had to downsize. Replacing the gutter on the existing building, that was a recommendation that the library board had agreed to then also, so that it has all new gutters on that, and they were fully needed rerouting bathrooms, which had actually vented into the, into the south on the east side of the building, so that needed to be rerouted. And then as they tore out the wall between the old, the old meeting room and the library, there was some, there's some electric kind of running down that wall that serves floor outlets in the existing library, and it ended up being quite an, an undertaking to get those kinds of, so you see the costs on that was 2,700. Total on these change orders, 4,776, but all recommended.
Motion on the change orders, on the, second.
Second.
Okay, it's 19.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
I thought the library, if it's worse, thank you, but I thought all the libraries that didn't know to go out of that building.
Well, I thought it worked. It better work now.
I just thought, I remembered changing that. Hold on, okay, now our CDVG hundred grand?
Just one other thing, one of the library-related things, that the library's open yesterday, so they, they are now back open and serving, operating under normal.
Okay. Quite a few of them are unclosed, but.
Yeah, so on the CDVG, this would just be a payment request, it's payment request number two. These costs are, virtually all of them are for Kessie Harmon's house across the street, so what we do is authorize this payment request, but it's also authorizing the draw to the state, and we don't actually pay the, pay the amount until, until we receive those funds from the state.
Motion today?
So long.
Second, second. Roll call.
Over.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, everybody saw that Neil Cooley is designing, he needs to advertise for one.
Yep, Neil followed his wife to Des Moines, he didn't care for it here, so he went down to Des Moines and see what it was like.
So we'll need a motion to advertise within the process. I'll make that motion. Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
So is his two weeks off last?
Uh, his two weeks will be up, he's submitted the fourth.
So he's still working?
Yes, but he, he moved to Des Moines today, so, but that's, what's that? That's more than. No, well, he would have to work till Thursday, but I can't, he's supposed to work till Thursday time, scheduled till then, but on his paycheck today, this would be his last paycheck, okay? So I sent him a message to see if he's planning on working to have it back.
Okay, okay, resolution 2037, salary employees, city.
Yeah, before we get into discussion on that, I'd like to, let's talk through this standard operating procedure at your seat tonight about an on-call policy, and how this may affect our discussion in regards to, to salaries tonight too, because bill, bill is personally affected then by, by the on-call policy. The policy itself, that, the top paragraph there pretty, pretty much describes what the policy would be, okay? So it's, uh, we would have a person being on-call, which in the union agreement, it's always referred to as standby, so we have this person on standby, um, that it starts at the end of the workday on Monday, and goes through until the beginning of the workday following Monday, unless that's a holiday, then it's Tuesday, okay? The, the standby employee carries the city issue cell phone, we have those phones, and they're ready to go. And the standby employee then has to be immediately accessible by the cell phone, okay? Needs to be in the vicinity of Lakeview so that they can respond to the maintenance shop within 30-minute response time. So we had submitted that concept of, of a policy to, to the union, Melissa had several additional questions from that, and we had a little back and forth about, about some of these questions, which would result in this policy, and it's, uh, this would be the proposed standard operating procedure, and she did acknowledge then that the city can go ahead and, and proceed with this. You know, we prepare the operating procedure, she's still entitled to her 14 days of review time. Policy effective date on this is proposed to be July 13th, and what that is, is the start of the next pay period after the first of July. All right, this does define the, the instances for, for which folks would have to take call. See this wide variety of, of situations, and you read the description there. But, so it, a lot of it can involve utility services, a lot of it can involve maintaining streets, that type of stuff, and that may often be storm-related, you know, and, and those type of callouts. Assisting emergency services, assuring the safety of, of the public, or addressing instances which could then result in injury to employees of the public, or then damage or loss of public or private assets. This also then does apply to responding to problems in, in parks and, 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 and restaurants. Scheduling, again, it would be one, one week, but what this does. Scheduling, again, it would be one, one week, but what this does is, uh, so there's three, three people in the public works department, three people in the electric department. They would be on-call one out of those three weeks, okay? For, for the public works, of course, they're all three, uh, hourly union members, they'd be, they'd be paid accordingly. For the electric side of things, you, you have, uh, Jeff and Cameron paid, and then there's this, an issue then with Bill, you know, about Bill being an exempt employee, and how that is treated then for paying for, for, uh, this time being on-call. Scheduling, uh, scheduling changes, we, basically the employees, they can swap weeks back and forth as, as needed, okay? But the intent is still that out of this three-week block, that each person's gonna work one of those weeks. You know, so you're not having one person carrying a lot more of the weight. If, uh, there's an emergency situation or an illness, okay, the employee's gonna contact Bill, and then the scheduled employee cover that. So how, how do you contact the standby employee? Okay, so again, the standby employee has the city's cell phone, and they can receive calls from the comm center. That would be the normal way for a citizen to respond to, to an after-hour issue right now would be that the citizen calls the, uh, the city's utility line. And that utility line after hours goes forwarded up to the comm center, the comm center would have the information about the, the, uh, numbers for these new cellphones, and that is the person then that the comm center dispatches. Okay, it's not, they don't dispatch a person, they're only calling the phone, they, they likely don't know who's on-call at any time, and that, they're just calling, they're just calling on the cell phone. Okay? But, uh, also, uh, utilities superintendent can, can contact that standby employee, other city employees can. Okay, it's the intention that these cellphone numbers would not be shared with the general public. Now we'll see how that goes, and how you ever manage to keep a number secret to yourself, but, and that's not the intention of it to be secret, but it's not intended to be public, where they should go through the comm center so that the utility can reference it. Availability?
But if they had a person on call, they'd be able to carry, carry their own cellphones, wouldn't they?
Well, they can certainly carry their cellphones, you know.
I mean, if the wife or whatever, or spouse, or whatever wants, needs to get home or something, it's still good.
Um, availability to respond, again, it's a, it's a response within this thirty-minute response time. You'll see the, uh, this specifically mentions the issue about remaining compliant with the, mainly drinking is, is regards to their, to their CDL license. Okay, so they need to remain compliant while they're on-call, and that's, uh, not having the blood alcohol concentration of point oh two or greater. Payment, um, non-exempt employees, so that's every, all the hourly employees, they get paid for the standby provision of collective bargaining, right now, that's a dollar an hour. Uh, that was one thing that the, the union had, had mentioned on that, is this dollar an hour, and we would, um, it's, it's in the, the contract right now, we would just abide by the contract. Okay, understanding that the contract's only good for one more year, I would totally expect that would be one of the things that they would seek to negotiate.
So right now, what is the procedure?
Bill?
It's pretty much true, Jerry.
Well, I'm shooting something.
You know, if, if there's, if there's a call that ends up up at the comm center, they have, and, and itemized a list of, of people that they call, that Bill's at the top of the list.
So if they, they call Bill, then what do you do? Do you call someone, or do you just always take care of it yourself?
When nobody answers the phone, I go out.
So you call Bill first?
Of course I do.
Every, so like if it, if, if there's four weekends in a row that you get a call, would that happen?
Oh, yes.
I would think so. So you call, you call these employees, do, how, what kind of response are you giving?
I don't keep track of it. I guess Scott's got, um, time.
We would, we would have everything on time sheets as far as when they, when they actually came out for work.
But I'm asking, what do you do?
You, you call them, and you, and you try to get ahold, and it's guessing by golly sometimes, if you just, it doesn't happen.
And then you pay them the dollar extra?
There is no dollar pay on, nobody's on-call, right, so.
So you just pay them, they're, they get overtime?
They would get, they get paid overtime for, for the time that they're.
They still get paid the overtime if they get called out.
In this case, you're gonna pay overtime plus a dollar, is that it?
They get, they get a dollar per hour that they're on standby time. If they're called into work, they get their normal, uh, their normal pay, most likely at overtime, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be overtime hours, and, uh, so yeah, they get, they get that, yeah, the standard call-out is two hours.
So the dollar is the overtime if they're on-call, right?
So, and then that's the, the issue there about pay, so non-exempt employees, they're all paid that dollar an hour, okay? And this does say exempt employees, uh, Bill receives that, that compensation, I know, we'll have staff that discuss, know about, about what that would be.
Here's the problem I see. Somebody calls in sick. I call one department, I call two of the employees, they'll be answering the phone.
Well, there, if they have this on-call phone, they can't very well not answer unless they're, um.
Well, I'm talking about, the person that's on-call calls me and says he's sick. I call two other people, and they don't answer the phone.
Then there's a problem because.
Then we're right back to ground zero again.
And you have to pick up the slack, you know?
It's now is the way it is, and I see problems. It's like when I shake a nail off, it's like, that's the way it is.
But shouldn't this at least be a step to improve that? Because if we don't do anything, where are you at?
I should hope so.
Where are you at then? Now we're.
I should, I should have hoped so. Well, I, I, I think that the improvement over what they have, if they do it, uh, you say they're not. If they do it.
Yeah, for, for a normal regularly scheduled time that they're on-call, they got to, I mean, this is just.
How often will they be on-call, like the other week, or?
Every thirty, maybe. And if they don't do it, I mean, you're saying somebody calls in sick?
They just call in sick, and then I have to call somebody else, and then nobody answers the phone.
So they call in sick, do they have to bring a milk from the doctor's and they're sick?
On the third day.
Well, on the third day, oh, I, again, this is an improvement, and you won't know what happens, Dave.
No.
That's right. So I guess anything outside that would be hypothetical.
Look, it's all from there.
I think we got pretty good employees.
That's just what I was gonna say, huh?
Don't adhere to it.
But I do feel like if Bill's the one stuck in, called out just because he's exempt, I, I think he has to be given some kind of monetary.
Then I also asked Scott today too, but he, it's both departments. Well, I think that, we should leave it, if we crack the heads and discuss.
Who's sitting there? The other ones.
What with all of them?
Who's sitting there?
But isn't there some way that if you say it was their turn, and they needed, or how do you, you're gonna call somebody to help her because they get sick or something, uh, the guy that's on-call, is that how that?
If the guy that's on-call is sick or has an emergency, that they lead, you know?
Then you have to try to find someone else.
React to that, then, but there's not much you can do about it because they're on-call.
Say that you interviewed.
But there's not much you can do about it, because you can't do any, you know, uh.
No, that's not true. That's a case for disciplinary action, and that's what should be done, and that's the thing about this disciplinary action, and I know, I think we have good employees too, but you're always gonna have some issues, um. And you have to, you have to follow that union contract, you have to do the written regimen, you have to do the oral if it comes first, or however it's laid out in our contract, you have to do it, you have to do it every time.
Vicki, we've had past employees ride that blood sewer, and I've called at two in the morning, and nobody answers the phone.
Oh, I'm sure that's true.
Well, we're not talking current employee, I'm talking, this is who I see, and that happened to past employees.
I'm sure that's true.
So if, if somebody's supposed to be on-call, and they decide, and they take a week of vacation, they just swap with somebody else?
That's what they do right now, with street water sewer, they, they swap their testing, they just hook them up to each other, they never been a problem, I don't care if they do it, as long as they got somebody covering the, the, the testing.
And, and that's the way this should be, it shouldn't matter who's got, just so somebody's got the phone.
And that's actually how, that, that they can swap them also?
But I'm saying that if they do, if they do call in sick, or they do, and I mean, you know, obviously people do get sick, but failure to respond, I mean, you just have to document, document, document. Because you have to show a clear cause to the, and I think we do have good employees, you know, but I understand what Bill's saying. But when you get called out on weekends all the time, it's not much fun.
If they don't, if they don't answer the phone, how can that be a write-up?
If they're on-call?
No, I'm talking about.
You're talking about the backup people.
Right, or I need more help.
You can't really like them, because they're on-call to start with.
So are you having a big problem with that now? With our current employees?
We've had a lot of problems lately, no.
So you, you're saying you haven't had that many calls?
No.
And do you know why, I think to some degree, Bill, is because of the maintenance you're doing? I will say that.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
The maintenance we're doing, it, you know.
I do too, that's.
We're not having those huge failures.
I think, if we make this, and.
See where it goes.
Yeah, that's the.
But I do think we need to address when Bill's on-call.
He needs something. Something.
So you're part of the three, every three weeks?
Right, Dave.
Yep. So, okay.
Okay, what?
So you give it the same as they get, that work?
Yep, no problem. But if, if this gets to be continuous, I can't do it. Going the way it was last, last winter.
Well, and, and you know, to me, when we're looking at, what, we have a year left on the contract? I think we need to be looking at this position that no one wanted, and how we need to realign our workforce, you know, and to either have someone fill that position.
I just.
Because I think that position needs to be created, and if, and if none of our current employees are interested, then I think we have to look at maybe re-changing our structure.
I just came with you with a problem, this is one way to solve. I don't care who you are, you can't work all your own.
No, no you can't. We appreciate the job you're doing.
Yes.
Well, so as, as far as this goes, we are gonna have a, an employee meeting on this, whether it's tomorrow or, or the day after, and, and we'll work through everything with the employees on this, noting that the, the, uh, effective date then is the thirteenth of July, you know, turnaround, with the city union right away, because they, they do have their fourteen-day review period. But again, I talked with, with Melissa about this, and we were on board with, with the concepts, and, but I wouldn't be surprised that she'll, she would have some, some future plans yet. Uh, so, yeah, I did, I did wanna go through that before we started any discussion on salary and wages, but, so as far as salary and wages go, um, just that there's a, a resolution in your packet, and that's on page fifteen. Page sixteen shows history for, uh, for all of our non-union employees, so it's the three departments that's okay. But, so on, on page fifteen, you see that all of the, uh, the top half of, of the page, everything's all, you can all, all filled in there. It's just implementing the, the, uh, salary, or excuse me, the wages from the, from the collective bargaining period. Does also propose, in the middle of the page, for part-time police officers, does propose three percent, uh, wage increase, and then seat salary, uh, for the department heads at the bottom is blank, and then case, uh, is blank also. Okay, of course, is an interesting, uh, position there that, that should not eligible to be covered by the union, but she is the one person that's not the department.
I'd like to have some discussion on separating department heads from the union, because the union is negotiating and stuff, and, um, I'd like to take the department heads away from that, you know, because you're just giving everybody a three percent raise, you know? We'll just have a moment of that, and have some discussion on that. Maybe take the department heads separately from the union, and, and discussion that, and.
I, I agree.
With, you know, job evaluation, do a job evaluation.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have any job performance evaluations.
Right.
And sometimes we're not pretty to some of them when they are done, and I, I kinda have a problem with the whole process.
So I, I guess I'd like to talk about maybe changing that.
Changing the fact that we put in the proposed wage increase before the union is negotiating, you know, I don't like, I don't like that.
You mean, it's put in the budget before?
Yeah, it's put in the budget.
We, we put it right in the budget.
Before we bargain?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, well, once every three years, I get that problem nutrition, otherwise we just are putting in the numbers that didn't work.
I just, I, I just don't, I just don't get the point.
So I, I don't know whether, if we should get, either commit to look at it, and make a recommendation to the council, or if we should just, um, do the department heads separately? What do you, what do you guys think?
Well, I think you can, you have a committee, you can kind of go and evaluate job performances with the, with the, with the, and then find a man who is great, at least talk, and see what goals that they have, what goals, the, the, what are our expectations of, you know, I mean? Where, where is our fellow spots, or, 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 how can we help them better with their job performance, what can we do as a council, you know what I'm saying? You know, we, don't take this wrong, I don't wanna, get picked on everything else, but we should all have an idea about what, what we're gonna do in the future, you know? What needs to be done. I always pick Bill worried about some of the things that, you know, that, that he does, and why do you do it? And, you know, have to learn about some of this stuff, and if you have any questions, you should ask him. I don't know, committee, we don't separate one-on-one, but again, we don't, we gotta, could that be a closed session type of situation, that then have to be involved with the employee, I'm sure they get.
Yeah, so he did, I think either, you know, if you wanna look at a committee structure and have, have two council members, and maybe the mayor, and you could have any meetings with any of the individuals.
And we, do you have like the whole council do like a job evaluation? Give it to a committee, have a committee talk about it, and then give the recommendation to the council?
Yeah, or the other option is just to meet with the whole council, and, and the, uh, just if you wanna do that in closed session, that the employee would have to request that.
I, I don't.
I think we've done that before, I don't know.
I just think what we're probably all thinking is that we don't like the procedure, because the procedure is, uh.
Right.
What help can we do? Another committee, and the committee would do what? The committee would meet and take the council's recommendations, and then do the employee evaluations, is that what you're thinking?
Well, somewhere I think an employee evaluation is, uh, whether.
Right, I agree too.
It can't be done by the committee, though?
Sure.
Like, the evaluation individually, the employee would be done by the committee?
Right.
Then the committee would maybe take those.
Recommendations?
To the council for discussion, and then at that point, it would be. Then the committee would maybe take those recommendations to the council for a discussion and then at that point it would be.
So, so a councilman could, he had certain questions, could add to the committee, could answer, ask a question, come back and answer to us and that. That, that would, the whole, actually the whole council would be involved in the procedure without.
Being present at the moment.
Yeah, that, making of that council.
Cause they could, they could give the questions to the committee that they asked, if they have a certain thing they want to.
We wouldn't be doing anything that way if we just, if we all had questions, we had two representatives.
Yeah, as long as it's committee, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
I like, I like that idea.
I mean, there's nothing we can do about the union.
No.
This time.
Right.
But we still, this time, do something about.
But if we're gonna do it, again, I think that there needs to be a complete procedure that then on how we're changing this and why, and we're looking to, you know.
Well, and maybe that separate day could, could have some impact on how we are gonna handle the changes in the union negotiation. Not the actual negotiations, but what they want to change in that negotiation. Like for instance, I would like to see something done about this position and, you know, we wanted our employees to take advantage of it and, you know, they have reservations and we need to find out what they are, where they are. But I think we need that position and then we need to, you know, maybe then we, we change the positions. We don't hire more people, but we, we have that position and someone either wants it or they don't and then we don't need. The second other position, just see what I'm saying? That's what I think we need to do moving forward because I think the department head has to have somebody, they have to have someone. And if you want that, you know, and if our hope is that, that we always transition smoothly from a department head retiring to another department head. We've built that base and right now I don't think we have it, I think we have a lack right there. And maybe the committee could help with that too, looking forward and, and about how the budget is done and how the negotiations are done.
I take it you just want your.
No, I didn't.
I think I just, I think I was saying was, right now, the, the second person doesn't have any authority.
Right.
So that's the biggest thing, I see.
Right. And I, I just think we need that position, that's my opinion about that and then I didn't like the way the budget thing came out, but the proposed wage increase before we even go, so how can you negotiate when you've already said what you do? That makes some sense whatsoever.
Again, we just don't wanna be on the petty. If we don't get two volunteers, we're gonna get picked. Who's the two councilmen that would like to be involved?
I vote for Dave.
Yeah, me too. Maybe Whitey.
You good, Whitey?
Yeah.
But we need the mayor or, or just the council?
Well, the mayor.
Yeah.
You're on everything.
Everything. Whatever, can you write the big book?
Yeah, yeah, I can retire off, right? I lose them every month.
He's above the fold all the time.
Yes.
So then, so then I think that you, you just turn around and you approve the union stuff tonight.
Right.
And, and I would include Kay with that. Because we're just excluding the department head in this, right? Is that how?
The committee could talk about how to change the union part.
What, right.
Unions are gonna set, we just need to set Kay's.
Yeah, cause that's set Kay's.
I know, but you did, so I thought maybe, so did you wanna do this immediately, the separation?
Yeah. I could, I could start it on.
So how soon are you gonna, because I'm just saying, when the, when is, is, when is my deadline?
Wages go into effect in the first of July, okay? Um, but it's happened before that we don't have wages in.
You can make it retroactive, right.
Yeah, I, I. Right. I guess what I'd suggest on regarding this resolution is, is to fill in the, the number there for Kay, strike out everything pertaining to the department heads. And, uh, can you be able to pass the resolution? Certainly do wanna, uh, look at at least a 3% increase for, for Kay.
Yeah, I see.
Yes, I would agree with that.
The 3%?
Mm-hmm.
It's adding 54 cents.
Second?
Second.
Good, we'll call.
Now, excuse me, Ricky, can you move in? Give us a second here.
Right.
Okay, um, John?
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Hookman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, wasn't the 12 o'clock you were looking for?
Don't recall mentioning that, man.
I just started.
I don't recall saying one single word.
No, you didn't. I just wanted to make this going.
Oh, is that it?
But then we're. Okay, so we have to figure out when we're gonna meet this week, move on or?
Yep, so, well, we need to, yeah, just figure out time when we can, when we can get together.
We'll work around your schedule, basically.
And, and then we can, as individual council members, we can put some questions together and give those to you or anyone, right?
We can give you a few days to write a question, maybe a question, stuff.
Thank you, man.
That'll be okay.
Yeah.
Anything?
So is there a market?
Please don't just get to my time, yeah.
Getting on first, because that's golfing.
Yeah, you can do it on Thursday.
Captain, if he's not getting upset.
Right.
Just bad news.
We just submit, we only need three of them, right?
Yep, that'll work. Is that what I do, five, four? Okay. Are you?
Yeah.
For, for Bill, all of the committee, not with any, not with any important.
No, not with any, no. This is gonna take a couple of, sort of, sort of, being golf is a good thing.
Kay, thanks for everything you do, just in case you never hear that.
Right, we appreciate it, thank you.
You have an administrative report?
Just, just a few things, Lagoon, the walkthrough is tomorrow at 10 o'clock. And we'll meet up here then and we'll all go out together, so. Who's able to go tamming and?
Is that tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ricky. My dad is.
I can't, I don't know if I can or not.
You be sure it's me.
I can't, we'll just, we'll shut them up at times, just. I'll find it.
Oh, you get a private server, you betcha.
I wouldn't mind to drive through if there's something I can say, I don't understand, I don't know.
Walk out on the uneven ground?
I can't.
Not right now.
I would tell you that today, just today, I received, um, a couple of proposed change orders. They're not, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, but they still need a little more explanation on, on this. One of them deals with some additional grading over the, the UV setup for $1,642 and, and some additional rock on, 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 near the effluent pipe, end of the effluent pipe for $1,059. So we'll be, uh, seeking some.
Oh, tomorrow?
Some further explanation on.
Ryan's there to be there?
He'll be there.
Is that the young one?
That'll, that'll, that depends on.
Not Bill's inspector.
Troy, Troy will, Troy will be there tomorrow too. So we're going through a walkthrough out there and you'll, and you'll see that, uh, you know, the project course is largely done and, and the lagoons are filling us out there on Friday. And the first lagoon was reinforced full this way. And maybe the second one started trickle over into the second. But I don't know, that's gonna take a month to fill those things. But it, uh, it did take, you know, a good week to, uh, to get that first one, to get the first one filled. So, um, we'll go out there, do a, do a walkthrough and we'll start preparing punch list items that need to be done, okay? They just anticipate that this is, uh, one of two, three, four different walkthroughs that'll be done, most likely with staff. But it's, it's not just a one and done, that there, we'll identify things that have to be done, but there's, there's several things that'll come up over time also that get added to the punch list.
So you're saying we have more than just a walk through? And so, so far, everything appears to.
All downhill.
It's, yeah, the, the sewer, by, by the time it gets out there, they say it's really roaring by the time it gets out there, so it's, it's getting good flow.
You happy with it, Bill?
I was shy. You know, they replaced that one section, I took, I took a video of it, this guy John. I mean, he is flying, you know.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gotta work.
Do that, so we'll have this, this meeting, um, tomorrow for, for the walkthrough. Know that, and I sent this, emailed this out to you, I believe last week, about some correspondence from the, from the engineer in the yards to start thinking about liquidated damages and how we're going to approach that. And the third year of a maintenance fund, because they are on board, then with getting to that maintenance, that'll be a little negotiation to get, as far as how much it, how much, uh, relief from the liquidated damages that you.
Do you have a total number yet?
No.
When you get to that, are we gonna have the total number that's due us?
We can, yes, the total number a day is times 500 bucks.
Yeah.
I mean, that's it.
We're gonna have that?
Yep, we'll have, but we'll also have our.
And then we'll have their plan.
Their plan. The third thing is, is we have incurred costs, so we, we know what our, what our actual cost.
Jason's really been good to work with, formerly.
He has been.
That's the tall?
He's been going backwards right now, you know.
Is that the tall guy?
Yeah.
He's.
He's taller than I am, press on much.
Well, the one that's always been out there whenever I go.
He's got beard, don't he? Well, he's a little, I think it's time to go.
High-year-old, yeah. He's been there since the beginning.
I've got a couple of things, um, Dave's made a problem overnight, but, uh, I'd like to have some talk about, or council talk about, um, moving, possibly moving that down, so going up there. I mean, you just called me this evening.
He's all for it.
Yeah, I, he said it.
Yeah.
So, and then also out, uh, Cobos, that light pole for Larry.
Who?
Who?
Oh.
I've, I've, we've delivered, uh, rolls out there last Sunday and I goddamn, there's that pole.
It's been there for how many years though? Since I've been here.
Yes.
The pole.
Thirty-three years that pole's been there.
Was it, it's good wires, but it didn't, so I mean, that's.
Only other thing, I'm moving house for it.
See, they tore down the existing cabin and he built that, you know, the previous owners, one of them made a figure.
Well, I'm just, you know.
They talked about moving it over to the other side of the property, but then I'm telling you, that neighbor on the other side, they're not gonna be happy.
Yeah, they don't like that change.
So it's the light, you don't like shining in?
The pole.
Oh, they don't like the pole, cause when they back in?
No, he said he didn't care if they took the pole out.
There it is. It's a street light pole.
But it, yeah, I don't know, he said they don't, they don't want to bother them at all. But I said, well, if he did, you know, you can just put a motion light in, in the pole there.
Well, they lit it up for the safety of the house, is what he said he did.
Sure.
They laid it out.
I understand.
They built the cabin bigger and everyone is driving, right?
But that pole's been on through about here.
Especially if you're thinking of vandalism or something, they're not there.
It's just like moving a fire hydrant or a transformer, it's a no-win situation.
I'm just.
Yeah, I talked, I talked.
He said. He asked me to say something, so I did. Really?
Nothing good.
Shouldn't we have been prepared?
We were closed down, but shouldn't we have been prepared, doing something sooner as far as.
I even specifically, I asked if the splash cover was ready to go, yep, ready, how goes, how goes that?
That the, yeah, all the water was on, ready to go, this is an electronic deal.
So did you turn it on? Why would you not, why would you not turn it on?
To check it out and check it.
Anyway, I guess I couldn't speak to that, but I do know that Eric has, has been really good about, about getting that done and he mentioned wanting to paint things before he ever turned any water on.
So it needs to be checked, I would guess you probably 30 days before we open. So if we open on Memorial Day typically, 30 days before, we should be checking like the first of May to see that that stuff works, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, there might be frozen, but.
It's not a new process.
I don't, I don't know about that.
Final lot of warnings, no?
It's just a general procedure to put in your place, you know, 30 days before you, you know, you're like, and then make sure everything's.
Exactly, cause it's, it's in dry before you paint. I, I was extremely disappointed.
You and 500.
You know, because, you know, that's what pays the bills, that kind of stuff pays the bills.
Uh, most, my last thing is I, I have a little plan on taking a few more vacations here before the end of June, 25, 26, 29, 30. Good time to do that, we got three weeks now.
I have a question for Dave, Jen.
I'm not even sure that old Dave is still, is still there?
The phone's gone.
We'll have to send.
I think Dave's gone.
Okay.
You got bored with us, don't laugh, Diddy?
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Uh-huh.
Second?
I'll say.
Be in the adjourn. Kay, I didn't find a new spot.
All right, thank you.